And this thing probably.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Let's uh start with roll call.
Mr. Mahoy.
Here.
Mr. Cancel Lanza.
Okay, we do not have a forum, but we will continue on the workshop anyway. And I'll go ahead and give permission to go ahead and keep it streamed so people can watch. It is a big meeting tomorrow and we'll let them watch the previews. Start out with uh Spence in the Minutes, approve the bills. Uh Resolution for Healthy Hearts and Paws Project. That's ARPA giving them an additional twelve thousand eight forty-seven. Which is much needed.
Very much appreciated.
Yeah, he's been on the news last couple of days with a few more rescues. Uh number five, ARPA, and this is Vernon Township and Mesopotamia Road Repair Funds Amendment. And we had to do this why?
Right, uh, our theater from County Podder. Um, this is the Vernon Road Project came in under like seventy thousand acres. And I spoke about this news, our township, before, that we we went ahead and did residual and put them informally back into the pot, but this formally does that and because of the way that the rules were, we had designated a project for it, and so we went ahead and designated it as the project that was already. So this is just, this is just really a paperwork, honestly.
Gotcha. Now, Mess will make them in under and I need all that money too, and then we can re-allocate again.
We'll be able to do that if next year, anything that when things come under those residual funds, we can reallocate those to if it's being approved.
All right, number six. Um Downtown Buildings Rod Band, this is where we were gonna park some money, case we own with this.
Um, I'll talk about the parking and then there's um
As you're putting thirty-four thousand now, I never saw this two hundred thousand before, but that's.
The two hundred thousand is to allow us to be able to add to it later.
We want to.
Right, and we, and and the project isn't going, it's going to cost. So it's just parking that money there, and then if the, when new board, uh, when other money residual funds become available, if they want allocating it to that project.
Okay. Eight, Buena Township, this is five thousand towards the fire department, again, seed money for potential future fire truck. Nine goes with that. Ten, resolution. Legal counsel, so I take it this is to pay the attorneys?
Correct, this was, because the attorneys were hired prior to having legal counsel to do these uh specific ARPA resolution or but resolutions authorizing these in ARPA expenditure, for whatever reason, it was never done. And so I was doing a review of all these as as we wrapped things up, I realized that, talked to attorney Rogers, and she she came up with this, I added a few things with the provision, uh, about this, so that we're covered, and it's actually authorized, and plus, and.
Um, but we have the site.
Yes, we do. All of that was done, that engagement, everything was done in the, but because it was done before we actually had that, we just didn't have this. And we had a PO, the money was already obligated, right, the BPO is encumbered, it's two hundred fifty thousand.
All right, amend Commissioners' regular meeting for ARPA. Original amount, this is for Board of Elections Project, Voter Access for Board of Elections. We approved two fifty-nine, but the total amount was four forty-six and additional one eighty-six. Did you ever change order or anything without or anything?
All of that was done, and again, this is me going to Julie, reviewing, and with Chrissy's help, by the way, reviewing all of these to make sure that the original ARPA resolution agreed with what was actually spent. And in some cases, it did not, and that's why we have to amend it. There were change orders, all of those things, but the resolution authorizing them as an ARPA official resolution, ARPA authorizing them as ARPA expenditure. This is cleaning up from years and years.
Okay.
Well, they know, they changed, they changed the requirements.
Right, absolutely, right, absolutely. So this is just this and.
I remember the roof, but I don't remember the other ones, I must remember.
Right, um, yes, that's that, the remodel.
Mike said.
Yeah, the voter access came first. So we have a budget for the project, that's what we, we had ARPA funding for, a budget. Then we'd go to bid, you know, bid amounts were less, what have you, and then we work through the project, project. Then they're comparing the the actual cost compared to what the projected cost was. And then, and just about every case, we were, oh. So there's some residual monies.
Well, on this one.
This one's saying we were way over.
There was, there was, there were, we've done, we've taken care of all the residual stuff. This, these are just cleaning up where we had projects that were a little bit more than it was anticipated. Those things were dealt with through regular resolutions and general actions. And for change orders, however, in order for it to be compliant, you need to have an ARPA resolution authorizing these as ARPA expenditure. And so we're just kind of dotting our i's and crossing our j's. And that's the thing for both of those. And we've had someone who has the decision.
Okay, and then uh thirteen was doing the same thing, revising for.
Wait, this think, uh, this is for the wing building, and so when they gave us um the original invoice that we, that was approved, this is a, the way the wing building was done was a little bit backwards, where they didn't have an ARPA resolution, they just had an agreement for them to do it up to a million dollars and costing much less, you recall originally, which was on our state reserve.
Two million is a good.
Yeah, two million. And and so it came in a lot less, which was wonderful. They had everything done left earlier this year with the exception of the green, which they couldn't do until the weather was better. They gave us an estimate on that invoice of the green. It came in higher, and I explained this last week as well, it came in higher, and so we are paying the difference, and we're authorized to do that as an ARPA.
All right, then fourteen, Toma County Family Court.
This is same kind of thing as this.
Increase the amount, twenty-three hundred plus.
And all of that's kind of accounted for on the spreadsheets, because I was going by what was actually. That's when I started.
This is balancing and finally on your checkbook, basically, so it's still a penny.
Well, basically, the 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 spreadsheet, the quote-unquote checkbook was balanced. What wasn't balanced was the paperwork on it. And so that's over.
Okay, number fifteen, adopt temporary appropriations. Uh, January to March thirty-first, all funds, says on appropriate purposes which expenditures are made during this period. So this is approving kind of a temporary budget.
For next year, so we'll start the year off twenty-five percent of this year for the first quarter. Uh, and hopefully we'll have, we'll have to have a budget by the end of March, but hopefully it'll be a little sooner.
Sixteen, approve additional appropriations. Uh, I guess looking at that, yeah, let's, let's go over some of the big concerns.
Explanations. So the auditor one, that's for, that's doing on behalf of the dog, uh, for the dog kennel and marine pole. Pole transfer, building inspections and increasing in electrical inspections, commissioners is increasing utility costs, the commissioners is ARPA. Um, this is, uh, or HR is increased hospitalization claims, uh, the sheriff is year-end cleanup, and then fiscal year twenty-five.
Yeah, what's the five thousand to sixty-three thousand is yours?
So that's year-end cleanup, this is transferring things, making sure that we get everything covered, taking things from one place to another. Then the fiscal year twenty-five HVE O grant, that I believe, the year-end cleanup was, I think, and this is, I have to have Chrissy to be sure, but there were things where we had some grants where they were, they overextended in the grants where they shouldn't have, so we had to fix that. Train, uh, the TID is um making for the state reimbursement grant, making rub in there. Um. A transfer appropriations, uh, nine-one-one is increased telephone class, auditor is year-end cleanup, um, this is, uh, and then the, uh, the second auditor is year-end cleanup, board of health is year-end cleanup, clerk of courts is BCI check for new employees. Thirty thousand for commissioners is the DM studies, and we're just fixing the object voting net. Thirty-two thousand in attorney costs. A hundred and four seventy is increased lease costs, the dog kennel is increased mailing costs, eastern court is increasing equipment maintenance. Highway is increased computer service and software, um, the other highway is increased vehicle maintenance, um. Sanitary engineer is janitorial supplies, um, and sludge hauling. And year-end cleanup, sheriff is cleanup grant for year-end, and then year-end cleanup, veteran services is new signage.
Yeah, did we ever get anything back from the sheriff regarding the retro pay for the majors or anything like that? Did he ever resubmit this stuff or redo it?
We're, we, we're working.
But there's nothing there that's not in any of this, or? Okay. So that won't happen until after the first of the year, if it does.
Well, it'll, it'll happen, it has to happen before the end of the year, but.
We won't have meeting approved it, though.
No, you won't need a meeting to approve it, because um you last week approved us to be clean up.
Yeah, right, we did, we we approved up to the one point five four four.
No, that's on time. They're, they're not gonna get more than, okay, but we're, you approved us to be able to do transfers.
Well, then, it is budget that he already had, and that's where he's working.
One point five was just for payroll, that was something totally different than the retro pay and the uniform. Uh, so that was something totally different. Um, but yeah, if there's monies available, it's what Martha's saying, if there's monies available within their, their funds, and they can find ways to pay things, not asking for additional general fund, they're allowed to do that, he was allowed to do that.
And that's what you.
That's what you approved last week, was, you know, the auditor.
That's conversation I had with him after, and then he was gonna work with the auditors to see where in his own budget.
You will, you approved us to be able to do transfers and transfer. So that's what we'll do.
Right. Additional transfers, just transfers within his own budget.
Transfers of appropriations, transfer that's within their allocated appropriations from one point four, not additional appropriation, there's two terms there.
Right. So just make it clear, then I'll give a phone call after.
Uh, I will too, so that's why I want to be clear on it as well, because I'm tired of being frightened, to be quite frank with you, so.
Okay, number eighteen, adopt the resolution, great, you didn't miss anything yet. Adopt the resolution approving the submitted list, November purchasers of various vendors of then and now. Nineteen, receive on file dog kennels report. Twenty, to accept an award bid, the lowest response of responsible bids submitted by vendor construction for the fairgrounds four-H replacement project, in the amount of five ninety-seven eight hundred. There were two other bids. Mike, wanna talk about this?
Commissioners, this is the last.
Name and title.
John Mike Swinski, Toma County voting official. This is the last of the uh ARPA projects funded for the Toma County Fairgrounds. This is the replacement of the four-H building for the kids over at the Ryden Arena, which would be like west side of the fairgrounds. Um, so we're gonna replace that building its entirety, we bid the project, we got three good contractors, all local contractors. Well within the project limits, the funding limits, and uh we recommend that you award a bid to vendor construction from Phil, Ohio.
You gave me considerably less, over a hundred thousand dollars last year. Almost two hundred. Okay, hopefully it's not a bunch of change orders like that that add, add to it, and that we stick to pretty close. And we appropriated seven hundred and fifty thousand. Was it eight fifty?
Seven fifty was the engineers' estimate.
Okay.
Engineers' estimate was seven forty-eight, seven fifty.
Had a little bit more of a cushion.
Yeah, there's a cushion.
Yes, correct.
Okay, with that, I get a question then. I get a call from the fair board last week, they're looking for forty thousand dollars to redo the pigs' pens for safety reasons. There's some of them that have faulty gates, things like that, where the pigs are able to escape. And they asked if they can come to commissioners and ask for that. Is there any way for the end of the year, that there's gonna be extra money on the fair thing, we could tie in the pig pens?
Do you want to have a special meeting? Because that's not, and we, we don't have eligibility on it, but it has to be an approved project.
I understand, we're doing the four-H building.
Right, I understand.
This is a four-H project, the pig, pig projects. I'm just seeing if there's a way we could tie it in tomorrow, that we can, we can.
Tomorrow.
Yes.
I'll give you a Tonya's number.
Ten minutes to explain the process, sorry.
I mean, I know we already got some things set aside, but is there a way, and I brought this up last week with the fairgrounds. Is there a way, does they have that, they have the riding arena thing where they want to put a pavilion up? If if we appropriated eight fifty, if they only use six hundred of this, is there a way we can?
We still have to revise an MOU, you have to have it approved by Tonya. She has to issue a legal opinion on the eligibility of the scope of work. So I'm, I'm, it probably will, but I don't know between today and tomorrow that she would be able to uh respond that quickly, and also, I mean, I could do the revision to the MOU quickly, but you need a very detailed scope of work to. That's the short.
So let me just take a flyer here for seconds, this is just me here in informal meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of other counties that don't have a Tonya, we were doing things to the T, absolutely perfect. Is there?
If you want me to revise.
Right, we were, and there's something where any money the fair don't use, I want to go back to the fair. I don't want to go to fiber, I don't want to go to sewer. If it was fair board related, I would like to keep it in with the fair board, if they need pig pens redone.
So if you want to, so the, the issue is, how do you define an obligation? And the MOU, the MOU is very specific, you have to have certain things filled out within the MOU.
Understand.
If you wanted.
Is there an MOU that could be general maintenance of four-H fairground property or maintenance of safety uh within the fairgrounds four-H area?
I mean, my, my instructions from Tonya were to be very specific, again, we can try to get her to respond.
Building for the four-H kids, why not your pig pen for the four-H pigs? In cooperation with.
I'm not disputing any of them. It's just the timing.
I understand, but I didn't realize till today that they may have two hundred fifty thousand dollars still left in the pot, three hundred fifty thousand, or two fifty above and beyond.
Go ahead, go ahead, Bill.
Oh, pardon, I'm sorry, Toma County maintenance. Um, I came in the last bit of this, but no, I have um taken care of some fencing issues already around the fairgrounds. But this is new for what you're speaking about. Now, I just heard fencing, but outside.
This is, they're pig pens, they need forty thousand dollars more. They got, they did a, they went out to the public, to the community, and they got like twelve thousand raised. And they need forty thousand more to secure better housing for the pigs when they bring them to show. Um, because the, they need new pens, I guess, for.
Okay, I, I, I took care of other fencing issues that were, the fairgrounds have needed, so, um, this is new, so, yeah. I don't know if that could come up.
Yeah, so I'm not a lawyer, I have to say a lot this week, Julie Green, Toma County planning, but what I can say is the commissioners ultimately can make any decision they have to. What we're trying to say is, this is the process. But if you want me to do an MOU, revised MOU, that includes I think it should be a little bit more specific than just a general fairground improvement. Um, we, you can consider that for passage tomorrow without Tonya's input or opinion, but then you run the risk later on of having to repaint.
I understand.
So, I mean, that's, that's the process, I was just you know, our goal was to make sure that these funds don't have to be sent out.
Yeah, Gary Newbro, Sanitary Engineer, wouldn't you be able to go ahead and approve additional appropriation? And then let's say in January, Tonya comes back, so. Well, then you go back and revise the.
That's not how it works, no.
All right.
Sorry. Yeah, so when we, that's why we started the process in the, in the summertime, to define how do you obligate funds? Because I knew we would never be able to put everything under contract by the end of the year. So in order to have it obligated, it has to be under contract, under agreement, or an MOU with an agency, and this MOU.
We'll put it all in there, but then later revise the MOU if you have.
You can't, I'm just telling you, that's not the advice, legal advice we gave. Like, that's what the lawyers are telling us, and I listen to my lawyers, Billy. But if the commissioners want to approve it, I mean, again, they just, they just have to make that decision. See what happens in the competitors.
I won't think.
Maybe, I'm still.
Just what I need.
All right, I'll dig that up and try and work with you afterward, I'll get all the details.
Whatever you want to do, whatever you guys want to do, I'm just telling you, I, we don't, based on legal counsel, we don't, they we can try to get all the time. Is it just that one?
Yeah, but what I'm thinking is, I mean, it's four-H area, if they want a pavilion and a pig pen, then maybe we can write it up something, increase the four-H facility for show, i.e. including viewing site and pig pen to house the people and the pigs watching the show. Something where.
I appreciate.
I do, I appreciate the dedication to that facility.
It is.
But we have some millions of dollars into it, you, you can sink more in, it's not ARP. Like, well, you can, but we run the risk.
I'm just saying, we already appropriated eight fifty, if they're only use six, I'd rather the other two fifty, if we can add it to them first, that was, that's my preference. It's one vote, it's one preference.
We have no problem with it, but I'm not in yet.
All right.
Good.
Are you gonna?
I'm done, love, yeah.
Are you gonna do that?
Uh, yeah, sure, I'll do whatever the commissioners say, they're the bosses, right?
I didn't know this, none of us knew this.
They are three of my eleven bosses, this is going on the agenda, though.
Apparently. We're just gonna amend, it'll be an amendment to the existing MOU, correct?
Make sure if there's anything else, Alice, Stephen Johnson Bush, if there's anything else that you really think that you need to reach out, I would, I would highly encourage you to reach out to the fair board, you know. I don't know, and, and they need to be abreast of whatever grandiose, like, you know, whatever you want to chalk it up to be. Whether it's pig, but they need to know like now, put that in there. So if there's any additional requests, these people need to understand, it needs to be done now. Because like, we're down.
So this meeting's over on all the phone, it's, it's.
And I'm not gonna lie, federal funds is not something that you want to mess with, when it comes to auditing purposes. Let's make sure, yeah. Risk management.
My butt's in line with it, I'll, I'll take that risk.
Right, it's not you, it's all of us.
You might get it, you're not the one.
We're in this together.
Okay, well, we leave with me afterward too.
Yeah, it just means.
Okay.
So you've done answers.
I think she thought she was done with.
Maybe.
Thank you, ladies. Twenty-one, approved modification, agreeing with CT consultants. Provide professional engineering services for the TRUTR oh-nine-five A Layer Road, Warren Number One Bridge Replacement Project. Located on Layer Road over Duck Creek and Warren Township. Modification necessary to compensate the consultant for additional design work. Uh, an increase of thirteen thousand six fifty-five. Uh, subject to direct payment from a federal grant received through the County Engineer Association of Ohio. No general funds request associated. Twenty-two, recur with Toma County Engineer to proceed with the if authorized section of the agreement with MS Consultants. Provide professional engineering services program year twenty-twenty-five, Toma County Annual Bridge Inspection Program. The amount, two hundred forty thousand five seventy-six, approximately two hundred seventy-five bridges, plus the cost of, twenty thousand for services provided to this agreement. This is an annual thing. Correct. Twenty-three, recur railway permit and bridge gas. Twenty-four, amend Commissioners' regular meeting agenda, dated December eleventh. That was last week, ready to receive and file petition for annexation, seeking the annexed properties situated in Tosh, Wethersfield, Toma County. Further note of being all the new lot, one A of the repla of Lot One of Kermore Properties. Lot number one is reported in Toma County flat instrument, and other Jason Lance set forth a petition of city annals. Its amendment is necessary to correct the annexation type from expedited type one to regular annexation. Okay? Speaking of which, is that the one we have to have the hearing on within?
No, that's life storage.
Okay.
That's the other.
So that's another one.
Yes.
And then there's potentially a third one coming in, Bracewell, that I got that letter on.
Possibly, I've not touched base, I have not heard back from them yet. They have to submit that properly.
Right, did we, did we set a date, or we're in the process of setting a date for the life stores?
I would like to do it if the reorg is gonna be January sixth, I'd like to do it in the afternoon, like maybe right after lunch, if possible.
On January sixth?
Yes.
Okay.
Because there's time constraints.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, seven, twenty-five, approve personnel action for the employment of Michael Luco for telecommunicator in nine-one-one, and then approve personal action for Dennis Loveless for telecommunicator in nine-one-one. So right now, plus two. Usually that's followed by minus one, minus three, hopefully it stays in the plus column. These aren't the supervisors, correct? These are just the regular telecommunications.
Yeah, we're, uh, I mean, although we're prioritizing both of those, Stephen Johnson Bush, resources term, although we are prioritizing both. Obviously, we need to get some bets in the seat, so, uh, while we're still working through some offers with the supervision candidates. Uh, one did drop out, and we had a one we're still pursuing, but unfortunately, that just takes time and everything has to wind up in the next week, average, and one. Sometimes we're able to offer that, sometimes we're not, so it is what it is. But we're not gonna stop from hiring telecommunicators, in the meantime, we're gonna continue, you're gonna continue to see this. Uh, they're still in the process of interviewing. Uh, again, this was a hundred apps that we received just through October and November, and they're coming in, right? But again, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're, you know, qualified. So out of the hundred apps that we screened, uh, fifty-five percent to critical, twenty-four on the past. So out of the hundred apps that we screened, uh, fifty-five percent to critical, twenty-four on the past, so that is very important. We don't go any further once they, we don't pass that critical, because that means they don't have access to the skill side to be able to handle nine one one dispatching job. Uh, seven passed the actual, out of the twenty-four that passed the critical. Seven actually came in for an interview, and that's how we got to the two that we have here, so. And we're still in the process of interviewing, and that will not stop.
Good.
So.
Keeping going. And now, speaking of which, accept the resignation of Ernest Mormon. Custodial worker in the maintenance department, so that brings us down again, another negative in maintenance, so I'm sure that will be posted or is posted?
Yeah, it's posted, so we actually posted that one, and then we're actually only down two total, so two are posted, correct?
Two custodial and one outdoors, or is that considered a studio maintenance?
Groundskeeper is separate, um, yeah, and that's up to, uh, Mr. Hart. Uh, if he chooses.
Is that posted or not?
And he's telling me he's, he does not, not like that decision posted, not so short, so.
He comes back in. Good.
Yeah. Again, there needs to be a, a strong operational need.
Right.
Uh, before we go posting jobs, again, the job's still there, it's vacant, it's on the work chart, we can't get rid of union jobs. But we really need to quantify if that job's really necessary, or has anybody watched it, studied it, I mean, are, are you sure?
I only know I was approached by both of the guys.
Well, but you were approached by employees.
Employees that said, we need a third guy, this is killing us, we're dead tired.
Then they need to talk to their department head and figure out what that was like.
Correct.
And then they'll apply HR, but I don't just post them as the department head feels that it's sufficient operation.
We've had as many as four in the past, right?
We have, but again. What, I don't need to be, what exactly are they doing during the time? Just out of curiosity.
Plowing, throwing salt, I mean, a lot of county buildings at seven AM or six AM. That takes the boys to get, get out there, what's that?
But they all do that, so not just the groundskeepers. So we're paying callouts for every single custo- not custodian, excuse me, it's pair worker too, they cannot plow. So that's a team effort, and they get, you know, they get paid accordingly for that. So again, it's something that we really need to study, a, a time study, capacity, to, we really need, you know, it's something that we need to ramp up during the summer. That I can understand, during the summer, they're, they're maintaining all of the grounds, they're mulching, they're planting, um, but during the winter time.
Do you recommend like maybe part-time position for this?
I, what I recommend, I'm recommending we study it, is what I recommend.
So, you're supposed to?
Because we do have, I, I can see, you know, I can see that sometimes the work isn't necessarily, I get where they're coming from. But are we doing the most with what we have, or are, are we maximizing our days? I'm not really sure. That's up to the department head, and he'll work with me if we feel like we need to look at that. And you as well, but I just caution you, you know, employees, I'm not gonna sit here in line, employees are gonna come up, you know, I could come up, I, I could come up to and say, oh, what works? And then you need hire five more, it doesn't mean you're gonna do that.
I shouldn't ignore it, I mean, it means everyone should look at it.
Well, hopefully they've had those conversations with their department head, and if not, then, then they need to, that is a change, so.
Okay, John, you know, authorize sending more present board of Trump County Mitch Service to sign on behalf of Trump County Department of Job and Family Services. The agreements per the enclosed list that create twenty-six training opportunities, three job opportunities, the cost of two hundred thirty-one thousand four sixty-four, fully funded the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act allocations, no general funds required.
Um, John Gardano, Director of Job and Family Services, that's correct, as you've indicated. This is a normal, uh, operation through the, um, this jobs area. And, uh, we have, as you've indicated, uh, twenty-six shop training opportunities for individuals and three job opportunities, uh, for individuals being paid out of that fund, which is no general fund.
Twenty-nine is approve a contract buying between J F S, All American USA Taxi. For October first to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, an amount of eight hundred thousand based past through funds, no general funds requested.
Yes.
We also have one for, uh, All American Taxi.
Twenty, if I may, twenty-seven through thirty-two are all dealing with transportation. Want me to just go through those for you?
No, twenty, twenty-nine starts at.
Yeah. Oh, here, well. I'll start if you want me to start, but I wanna give this to you also. And that just indicates that the contracts were sent to Bill Dando, uh, prosecutor's office to review. And he has reviewed them, and he has no issues as to. These are, these are all templates that, uh, we've even passed. The only thing that changes are the dates, and the, you could have the, the dates and the, the cost. Uh, number twenty-seven, uh, that's dealing.
That would be number.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Sorry.
Sorry. Um, twenty-nine is dealing with, uh, All American USA, and that's a turn begins October first, twenty twenty-four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and that is in the amount not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars. And there's absolutely no general fund that will be used, and this provides non-emergency medical transportation for those individuals, uh, that are Medicaid eligible uh, to receive transportation to and from those Medicaid providers. Uh, number thirty, uh, again, this is dealing with All America USA, and that's a same term time, and this is not to exceed ten thousand dollars. But this is, uh, being paid for pregnancy-related services for those individuals that, uh, need transportation to their prenatal care from Medicaid, Medicaid, uh, providers. Number thirty-one is with, uh, Garwin. And it's for the same time period, October first, twenty twenty-four through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. And this contract is not to exceed five hundred fifty thousand dollars. And that will be, uh, paid for non-emergency transportation again. And those are for individuals that are Medicaid eligible to be transported to, uh, Medicaid providers. Number thirty-two, again, is also with Garwin, in the same time period. And this is an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars, and this is for, um, eligible residents. Uh, that have no other means of transportation, uh, to and from medical providers and facilities located within the Title twenty service area. Um, and number thirty-three, and, uh, this is a new provider. Uh, this is, uh, between J F S and Loving Ham's, uh, Home Care. And this is for a term January one, twenty twenty-five through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. In the amount not to exceed one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. And again, absolutely no general fund is requested. Uh, they will also provide non-emergency medical transportation based upon the loaded mile, uh, to those individuals that are eligible and approved for Medicaid, uh, services into the Medicaid providers. Number thirty-four, and this is a, another new provider. Uh, this is between J F S and Jodell's Transportation Company, L L C. And this term is for January one, twenty twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Any amount not to exceed one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. They will also provide non-emergency medical transportation, uh, to those individuals, uh, that are, I mean, need, uh, services, medical services, and to approved Medicaid, uh, providers with services.
John, I notice, like, one, one company got eight hundred thousand, the other got five fifty, then these last two go one seventy-five, how do you pick?
Well.
Was that bid or?
They were, they were all bids, but the two that got more Garwin, even the All American, they have been doing it uh, for several years, and actually, we usually don't get many other providers to bid, uh, we have gotten these other two providers to bid. Got them, but they bid on the process, they're relatively new. We had, uh, we had meetings with them, what they can and cannot potentially provide, how much. So based upon that, uh, they were given the contract. And hopefully they will be able to perform and provide the services, and then next year when it goes out to big, we all change.
Correct.
They're newer, we're not sure exactly how they will be able to perform.
Correct.
Because they may not have the vehicles needed, so Garwin has been doing this long time to John's point, they have the fleet, they have that auto fleet, ready to go, USA Taxi, um. You know, they've been providers of our county, not just any, the non-emergency medical transportation, but in general, through senior levy, through all different other types of, you know, federal and state funding that we get. Um, but I will say, you know, if you only have two cars, we can only keep so much business, right?
That's what I was asking, do we know that that's what they have? We know, is it?
All that's in the big problem.
That's all the bidding process, and they review everything, they review how many other uh, employee, employee drivers they have, things like that, what they can, cannot hopefully handle. And based upon that, that's how they provide the contract.
Unfortunately, Title twenty money's aren't very plentiful, and we get a little bit, as you can see, but not any near. That is, when you talk about grant money, that is a grant, Title twenty is, is a grant, that's just.
I see Title twenty and Title nineteen's on there, is there a difference?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I only see Title twenty on one, all the others.
But again, it's, I think it's really important to, you know, I keep hearing through budget variance, we don't, you know, not everybody goes out to grants, but believe it or not, there is, I mean, there is departments who maintain and live on grant funding, just specifically J F S and C F C I, so.
Sure. Correct. All right, thirty-five, authorize change order number two to the contractor of Proscape Septic and Landscape Contractors. Uh, the two H S T S repair replacements awarded November fourteenth. Change order authorized president to sign any related documents. This is a contract extension because they didn't run out of time or weather or.
No, we added two there.
Add two?
Yeah, two in November, truly great. So we're just giving them time to.
Okay, very good. Thirty-six, ratified submission for amendment question number two to Ohio Department of Development for Grant. Community Development Grant Program authorized anyone to sign any related documents.
So we have Julie Green, Trump County, this is related to the, um, Hall and Scope Center Park. We had to move money around within the grant to be able to pay for the additional work that was necessary to finalize that project.
Okay. Thirty-seven, when commissioner's regular agenda April twenty-four, twenty-four. Adding the following language, original resolution pertaining to the chip grant application submitted to the state in June. In amount two fifty, amendment necessary to include the additional language stating that the board commissioners accept responsibility for an authority over entire chip grant program.
Julie Green, Trump County. Uh, regarding this one, we, we have an original resolution and the state, um, as you know, sent us a preliminary correspondence regarding our application, and this is one change that we have to respond to by December twenty-third, and I emailed Lisa and Chris to let you know. I'm just trying to figure out if we should add the language to the existing resolution and re-identify, I think that would be best, if that's possible.
Yeah.
At thirty-eight, approve change order final for Millian paving, the Hall and Scope Center Park not resourcing project, the amount of eight thousand. It's necessary to pay for cost associated with additional asphalt on four new catch bases.
Relates back to, I had thirty-six. So engineers felt that that was necessary in order to provide them with the best possible.
Thirty-nine, notify liquor control, public carry not requested for country fare on forty-six. And the same for, uh, Hakatako. So. Okay. It's your best plan, uh. Access, yeah? Forty-one, approve agreement between board commissioners and Dyna G Energy Services for Electric Generation Supply and Related Services. Effective, uh, let's say March twenty-five, shall remain in effect fourteen months. Okay, Dyna G is a new name, Mr. Bellis is here?
Uh, good morning, Tom Bellish, Trump.
Yes, sir.
So la- last year, um, Dyna G purchased Energy Harbor, so, uh, our, the current agreement on getting Energy Harbor is now by Dyna G, so that's, uh, so this is the fact that our renewal. So, uh, it's such a large purchase, it's, uh, quite very. Customer, so they're looking to set the price to, uh, kind of read the sign. We could do, I, I can get pricing today, but it would have to be refreshed for tomorrow.
Good. Well, we're already still covered under something until March, right?
This is for start March first.
So they're, they're speculating that far in advance, we can't wait until March to do it, or it's better to do it now, or?
We need to send letters out.
Okay, if it gets, because less than that between now and when they get the letters, will automatically be less, or they're gonna be locked in at this whatever rate on, they put on the letter tomorrow?
It's locked in when.
For how long?
So it'd be fourteen months.
So we're not doing a variable rate at all, if energy prices plummet, go down next summer, we're locked in, or whatever we sign now?
It's locked in, um, so large chunk, basket doors of price is already set. Passes makes are set all the way through May twenty twenty-six. Um, so we really know the cost, for these fourteen months, we're already shots.
Got it.
Now, after that, you know, it's totally open to market.
Right.
After month, May.
Right, but what they're paying now and what we're gonna sign, everybody said the other day, it's gonna be higher. We can speculate now, we know that, you know, what's today's number, do you have any today's numbers? Okay.
Last number that I, you see.
And the company, one of the other providers the other day, one locks in at seven point nine nine last week.
Correct.
So you're seven point eight five as of now?
As of now, I'll get a refresh, probably in an hour, half an hour, uh, and then tomorrow. Two, two o'clock.
I got.
To refresh.
And just full disclosure, we were like four points up last year.
Four point five.
So there are three dollars, what it, what is that?
Uh, cents, cents per kilo hour.
Good.
Or, um, uh, currently, Ohio has about eight point two cents. This summer, we're expecting Ohio has maybe about ten cents, whatever.
We'll still be locked into the seven point one.
We'll be locked in, so the savings will be locked in. Um.
But if Ohio Edison goes down to five, we, we're still at seven.
Their, their auctions, most of their auctions have been done already, so we know their price as well. Next winter, we're expecting eight point eight, nine cents, or in winter, there's, they have summer price. Uh, so about ten cents of some. So, uh, next winter, that's, that's majority, that's locked in.
Okay, then we did dig multiple bids, we did hear from multiple companies, and this is as good of a deal as we could find right now, just, that's why we're doing the deal with you, is services we have before in the past. And even the pricing you're giving us now is better than what the other offers were. Would I like to be four and a half again, or to everybody would, but we have to go with what the rates are, the rates are, we don't set as a county the electric rates. Now, this will be good for
Uh, fourteen months.
I know, but entities in the county.
Oh, yeah.
All entities except for.
Uh, Brookfield and, uh, Liberty. So we're, we're having, uh, whether it's still time to join in, uh, March, so, uh, paperwork. You see, I was gonna submit them, so they're, they're ready to go.
They have their own deal, or they'd be under our?
They'll be under. They'll be under Trump.
There was something I saw on the internet about Vazetta yesterday. Something nuts on solar, their rates going up, you know anything about that, or is that just the internet?
That was just the, that was just the, we need to prove the, the touch just using group solar, something. Uh, that, yeah, that's okay. So they're saying like, you know, money's gonna be, you allow solar. Uh, expert on that.
I was, it did seem like they, they defended themselves well, someone screamed, pricing it through.
Solar, it was something with solar power, something, but nothing to do with.
So and then, as you said, if there's someone for whatever reason isn't getting it, they can submit. Reach out to us, reach out to you, and then try to get their address in there, so they are covered if they're not in one of those other counties.
Right, absolutely, they're participating, I'm sure, you can uh, contact me and I'll make sure they give you.
Question, Rick Hernandez, Commissioner, like, so basically, the lock-in. Expect about a forty percent increase in your electric rates? I mean, I'm just, you know, to be clear, to be clear, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
It's a pretty big increase.
Yeah, significant increase, so, um, when all the buildings were shut down during the pandemic, that was. Different energy markets, uh, so we locked in long term.
Our resident bill, you know, if your bill's three hundred and six hundred, or close to six hundred dollars, so. It's something that we're gonna, and I agree with, uh, Commissioner Malloy, I believe these rates, just for our customers, I believe they're probably gonna tank. As this new administration, I can't say I know for sure, I have a suspicion that as they start opening up these pipelines and stuff, so. Our residents, but you know, they could expect maybe to see, I know we have to lock in the rates, but it's such a considerable increase. Um, it's a little bit hard to.
But everybody's still locked in until March, that four point three five, this won't go on effect until.
To get it, it'll be March, it'll be the last month.
And the letters will go out when?
Uh, like, set up in January.
And then does anyone, do they have to do anything, or can you disregard letter, or automatically still renew?
That's correct, they can disregard the letter and automatically get.
But if they wanna opt out, they can at that time, go on their own, sign independently, go on the internet, sign up with. Their own independent thing or something like some residents have done, but they're gonna be higher.
That's correct.
We're staying with Edison and whoever their carrier or whoever, is that still gonna be, is Edison gonna be Dyna G or Dyna G, whatever you call it? Um, cause it was.
Well, Dyna G bought energy harbor, but that was not a first-hand company.
No, no, I just chose on.
Cause we were, cause you were under energy harbor, you were under the county state. Correct.
Yeah, so the bill will still come from Ohio.
Right, okay.
So I, uh, had the agreement written by Dyna G, the same way it was written. Questions on there. Ready to go.
Thank you. And the next, grant permission trouble guy answer and reform the following work listed, beginning January one and ending December twenty-twenty-five. And is this a standard thing they do every year, kind of like their wish list of things they wanna do? And then forty-three, forty-four, forty-five. Trash, so I'm gonna read it, right, more disgusting. Basically fire this person, get rid of this person, bring all employees back, no double dipping. Hey, that concludes our regular agenda for today. We, uh, have any comments from department heads first of all? Him, Miss Zanny, introduce yourselves to the group.
John Zanny. Relax. Yeah, and also, we'll send you over, they'll be here in time, so there's a lot of uh, concern, and I totally understand. Around the uh, faithful duty performance, I don't wanna consider, I don't wanna keep calling it a bond, cause it's no longer a bond, so to speak. So anybody who knows about surety bonds, it's, it's really a type of loan, if you will, I don't wanna use the wrong terminology, but. Basically, it's just saying when it was a surety bond process, you're, you're authorized for this certain amount, but essentially it would have to be paid back. So it, it's something we're having, where we're doing this with the faithful duty performance, uh, it takes a little bit of that risk off. Uh, and again, the commissioners adopted that policy, and we will not only transition the newly elected officials, but as well. As the uh, current elected officials, you know, their surety bonds go away, we'll put them under that Corso umbrella as well, so we have done that. Um, there is also some questions about, Corso does offer for fiduciary employees, which is not typical. The, you know, when we're looking at surety bonds, there's nothing that says, for Ohio revised code, these people have to be, you know, have bonding. But there's nothing that says in Ohio revised code that, you know, the fiduciary employees have to, or can or can't, it's just your pressure. Corso is offering that as well for fiduciary employees, there is some, there is some. It's a little bit unclear, uh, because whether that follows under errors and omission, so some of us are just by default. Uh, we fall under the errors and omission, you know, process through Corso, but again, that's a hundred thousand dollars deductible now, so that's quite happy. So we really don't want to uh, be looking at that bucket, we don't have to, but yes, we are trying to, I just wanted to kind of give everybody some data. It's like, I keep getting so many calls, and it's okay, I know, it's a stressful time, but I mean, it's. It's all day, every day, call, text, what's going on with this, what's going on with that, so I'm trying to keep all the new elected officials abreast of these things. With one email chain that I have going on, um, so that way everybody gets the same information at the same time, versus having kind of these ones together. Yes, they're, they're working very quickly on that, and Corso also did notify us that even if, you know, you'll have it, but. No matter what, it technically, like by just them resolving it, the resolution, it's in effect as of your first date, no matter what, so you are good to go there. First date of your term, I should say, but.
Any other questions? Bill, when you were gone, we brought up about the, um.
Yes, I told him.
Yeah, what's it, what's the? Groundskeepers, we got two now, saw them in the quarter the other day, they both kind of expressed to me that, hey, when we get a third guy. It's wearing us out, especially if one guy's off, one guy's got it, is there, are you thinking of hiring a third guy or film, one of those other positions?
I, Bill Hart, Trump County man, I wasn't planning on filling the third one as of yet, until we get the new facility at Dogtown built up. The animal welfare, since we've had a handshake with AWL to assist them with some items, cause they gave us the three acres for free. So there's more like, you know, complimenting with the grass, groundskeeping type things around our building. But take care of some of their stuff as well while we're out there, as well as plowing the snow, but the groundskeepers. Right now, there, there's, there's downtime for them, the only time they come out in the winter, it basically is just to shovel the snow. And there's plenty of us that go out there, including my secretary, it's in her job description, to help shovel snow in winter, so. She takes care of downtown while the others on a tractor, and the other one's throwing the salt downtown, and then they branch out. And, you know, to the other areas, being the court, Portland, Act Building.
Are they cross-trained, so when they're not doing that stuff, where do the groundskeepers go? Are they inside doing maintenance, or they?
Yeah, they do outside maintenance, they should be doing outside maintenance, leaf sticks.
It's all outside.
Sweeping, you know, or coming inside fifty percent, it's cleaning in their job, so if there's something internal they do, they move boxes.
They move boxes.
Yeah, they do all kinds of odds and ends, you know, without being outside all the time, like if it rains, they can move boxes, you know, whatever, they done that the other day, so. Yeah, they, they're, they're busy, they're busy, but they're gonna get busier once we do this, you know, facility up there at the AWL, so.
Right, and we brought the possibility, would you entertain the possibility of part-time someone for summer instead? Or just summer help, maybe two summer helpers instead of?
I mean, we can discuss that with, with Alex because of the union issues, but we did have part-timers in this, in that local at one time. Uh, we had to get one to treasurer's office at part-time, so there's calculations when there's layoffs and all that stuff that goes into all of that, that. I remember when I was back at the union, so, yeah, I mean, I can discuss with, you know, in the summertime, if that's the case. As long as they're bonded and insured with the equipment that they're gonna use, I've already got another secured enclosed trailer for another mower we need to get. We may have to purchase later in the summer, so yes, I have that thing ready.
But, and I had a request also for commercial vacuum cleaners. Is there a chance we can get commercial vacuum cleaners, ones we have, I understand are just missile, off-the-shelf, Amazon. And then aren't made for salt and things like that.
The commercial vacuum cleaners we bought, that we've been buying, uh, the last wave of commercial was through the last administration. They're about eight hundred dollars.
Understand.
So, I mean, and they're fixable, you know, we've done our best to give them their lifespan, but to go ahead and buy. Another handful of eight hundred dollar sweepers, or the missiles, they're ninety-nine dollars or a hundred and twenty dollars. They get us through like two years, three years of sweeping, they can pay for themselves. But, I mean, that's something, you know, we can discuss.
We could look into that, cause I do understand, especially when there's. Bad weather and they're, they're, they're vacuuming salt and everything else, it's, it's a futile duty, I saw it firsthand, and it's. I think we need something commercial, they're gonna be able to do the job day in, day out, they vacuum every single day, they're vacuuming to make our buildings look good, so. I don't wanna give them.
I know that theory, you buy, you get what you pay, but.
Right, and instead of having disposable ninety-nine dollar vacuums, investment may be worth it if we can. Look into it, please.
Not a problem.
Okay, prosecutor, prosecutor, do you have anything?
The only thing that I would say, Bill Danso, County Prosecutor's Office, just to build off of what Alex was talking about. What I have recommended just for any of the new officials or existing officials is, because those certificates of insurance will be coming in. I think the best way to handle those is treat that like the bond paperwork that officials would ordinarily get, and go ahead and, and file that with the appropriate. Office that would ordinarily accept your bond and oath of office, for many of the officials, that's the treasurer, there are a few different ones, but. Um, you know, I, I think that that's just the best way, that way, if anybody makes public records requests for your bonds, for your. Uh, you know, oath of office, it's all in there together, and they'll see that certificate of insurance along with the pay.
And we will think, we will help, and, and that's been in all the communications that we're sending out, that we will absolutely, once your certification comes in. Again, I don't wanna keep calling it a bond, but we're treating it similar to a bond, um, but once that comes in, we'll make sure it's very clear in our revised code, at those point. Who it belongs and what, you know, auditors goes one place, uh, reporters go stop, you know, so on and so forth, some go to the treasurer, uh, so that way there is no, um. Poplative interest when they're housing those things, but you cannot house your own materials, and that's why there's a, there's a chain. So we'll make sure that we'll continue to partner with Prosecutor's Office to make sure that they don't go to the right places.
Um, Bill, not to break on you again, but another question for you, that we talked about last week, there was. Some county building doors were left open all weekend, were unlocked, and is there a policy we have? That when employees are working at night or hours when the county's closed, that they lock themselves in, they lock the door behind them, so the public can't wander off the street?
The doors that were left open were interior. So why they forgot to shut the doors behind them, I do not know, but I have made sure I have passed that message along to my. You know, supervisor to make sure they tell the people, make sure, shut, lock, the ones that are supposedly locked. And shut, some leave open, some don't lock them, so.
Again, it was brought to my attention again, that, there were some people not locking doors, cause they don't wanna use the key fob to get in and out, be tracked, they're coming in and out.
No, that, no, outside, no, no.
Julie Green, Trump County, Bill, sorry, our front door.
Yeah, we're getting that looked at, yes.
Was left unlocked, more than one.
Yeah, the, the new guy, the guy that took over the road guy, didn't know.
I just wanted to let you know, as you mentioned, it was interior, but yeah. And our interior doors luckily are locked, so it really wasn't a big deal, but.
I know, I'm just more worried about the security, if someone's in there working, they won't be surprised by a bum wandering off the street or whatever.
No, where's in Dallas Terry that's building, she's named Terry.
But, Mr., isn't the fob or isn't the keys, like I guess I'm just, cause like your building downstairs has a fob, so that, that doesn't.
Maintenance store on the side there, you can just go and pull it up wide open in the afternoon. That was something that you can't have, people can get in and get in the building and. So, I just wanna see if we have a policy, if we didn't, we need to look in to make sure when buildings are locked, even if someone's in there, they lock it behind them. So that they don't put themselves in a safety jeopardy thing, especially for new employees that don't know coming in and stuff, it just. If we don't have a policy, I was gonna recommend it, if you do, probably take care of it.
If you don't have a policy, it should be policy on the security, so somebody needs to. Updated, so that's what I'm saying, yeah, because I do not think we have a policy to, I don't surround. You know, bots, keys, um.
Tim, can we write something on IT maybe?
Oh, definitely, I, I, I had a maintenance uh, individual come to me this morning, wanting to get a second fob because of. Whatever inconvenience he has, whatever line he was trying to give me, I told him, one fob, one person, that's it. Uh, we, we do need policies on this.
Yeah.
A- absolutely.
Can you assist in readying that up then, potentially maybe with Bill before he goes in? It, it, just a safety, security thing, and it's, you know, we, they gotta be responsible, there's a reason, there's a fire, there's a reason we need to track, there's a reason. For that, and if they're boarding, we need to have a policy to make sure they don't.
Yeah, and then that policy too, we can, we can all work through this, but it really essentially needs to be in the Trump County personal policy. Cause it applies globally to every single public buildings, and they are all the commissioner's buildings, so we need to really make sure that we're. Updating that. You know, it's a big one, but it's important, so.
Yeah, we should now have a time when we're propping doors open, leaving them open, and they, oh, there should be some form of policy with that in regards to. It's locked. The locked doors should be locked.
And honestly, too, what goes hand in hand with that is the turning over those assets when you leave, when you vacate. So we can ensure that that's vacant as well, you know, there should be a chain of custody of where these keys are going, where these fobs are going, you know, all that stuff should be. Locked and tracked, so.
They've had something like that in jail, I know they've had issues with that in jails, everything, but now county might need to adopt it. Especially if we're gonna, we're gonna expand those things in different areas. Hey, Julie, you have something?
I do, I would like to acknowledge the wonderful work that our collaborative, collaborative team. Um, did to spend this money, I mean, you see thirty-eight million dollars, you think, oh, well, that's nice. But we don't spend enough time talking about the effort and the team, and the amount of time and. Administrative oversight that it took, so I'd like to list all the people that I work with and I'm proud to know. And if I miss anybody, I, it's not because I don't appreciate you, but literally, I was counting the projects. And our office alone worked with over fifty of these projects, my whole staff. Touched on it, and working with obviously number one, Martha Yoder, and again, I've said this to you, if it wasn't. For her stepping in and taking the lead, I don't think we would have been able to spend this money, but yeah. Um, and obviously, Tanya Rogers, who does a fantastic job. Uh, and she's very responsive, hopefully we can get her today, all the trustees, I mean, es- especially Hubbard Township. Uh, Mecca Township, Kinsman Township, I can't think of all of the ones that I worked with directly. But they were all just very cooperative and willing to share information, Gary Newbrow's office, Bill McCosky. Uh, Steve Pop, for all of those projects, our office alone worked with you to do, I think, seventeen memorandums of understanding. Since October, so that's, and I, I know that some people think, oh, well, they just give you them. That's not how it works, you have to read the code of federal regulations, you have to know and understand exactly what it is required to be in. Compliance for these funds, um, Hubbard Township, Weathersfield Township, Warren Township. All the nonprofits, Teresa Miller from, um. The Valley Partners alone spent over three million dollars, that's almost, that's almost ten percent to help our, our economic development initiative. And I believe that's a revolving loan fund, so those funds can continually be poured back into our local economy to help our businesses. Um, Gary, I don't even know how many projects you have, ten, well, something like that. Obviously, Gilheart, Ken, you also have been instrumental in all of these projects, as has Michael Solinsky. And these are not things that are, are typically. And these are not things that are our typical job descriptions, but as department heads, we always have and probably always will. Jump in to make sure that we can do what's best for our county and our people, because we love what we do. You can tell that by Michael just designing these projects that night on his kitchen table. And, you know, Bill always answering the phone twenty-four hours a day. Um, especially the. Your favorite, the agricultural facilities, I mean, we early on worked with Barry Brown to. Um, identify all of those projects. And Emily Moran was instrumental in that and Barry too, and Bill and uh Tim Sexton, Mother One, David Roots from Stroll Architects. All of these people, Trumpal Neighborhood Partnership, another big recipient of the funds, East Gate Regional Council of Governments with a broad band. Don't wanna miss anybody, John Hickey and Edryam and Kevich and. Um, all of our consultants, M M S consultants did a lot of the work. So, and uh, last but not least, the Trump County Planning Commission project, which we are grateful to have that taken care of. And that was in coordination with Bill and my. And Bo and Sons, Stroll Architects, and they did a great job with that. So I just wanted to um just say. It was a pleasure to be able to work collaboratively on such an impactful project these last couple of years. And of course, the commissioner's office, Lisa and Chrissy and Shara, who paid all the bills.
Yes.
And work closely with the accounting firm and still does on all the reporting requirements, which are. Very um involved. So. Forgot anybody else, um, yeah, it's not on purpose, it's just, I just want. The general public and everybody to know who doesn't work on these types of projects day to day to understand the level of information. The level of collaboration and the amount of administrative oversight and duties associated with getting these types of projects. Off the ground, and we're still two years away from being.
Um, I went to CAG. Gary. Happy about. That resolutions matching the amount spent, that was always. Very meticulous and I appreciate that a lot because it was as we've tried to catch up and get these things accomplished right to tomorrow. It's been important. And I. Leaving reports, I'm not gonna give a report tomorrow, but I am leaving reports for commissioners and I've given uh. Commissioner Boy is, I'm real happy to see that zero at the bottom. But I do know that, as we say, that we got to zero, but we're not done. Um, and there's still a lot to do, we've been doing it here. Um, specifically by our official office, I wanna make sure the commissioners understand how much work is involved yet. Still before the end of the year, if you look at the second to the last page. On your, the, the, um. The on the, or the center reserve, if you look at that page, there's a lot of weight there. Those white ones are ones that we have not yet encumbered funds for. Means we have POs. Between what's there and what's approved will be approved tomorrow, there will be twenty-two. Grants that still have to have their paperwork done and their purchase order done by December thirty-first. That is a ton of work for both Shara and Chrissy, and I want people to understand how much work that is, it's not just. Clicking a fob, it's paperwork that has to be done, it's making sure we have it done behind us, it's making sure we have the um credit. But yeah, everything correct, those things have to be correct, that it's gotten better at that, but it's a lot of work for these ladies. And I want people to get that, that it's still not trying to approve these and. Um, I know I can get a little irritable, but a lot of my irritability on this has been not just because I have extra work, but because there's extra work created for employees. That maybe doesn't. So, um, just know that we have. Two weeks, about less than two weeks left in the year, and a lot of those days are not working days. So there's a lot there to still be done, and a lot to be done after that by my office working on the county compliance. It'll be much more behind, so I'll still be out here as we get residual funds and things like that and figure out where that goes. But it's a lot, there's still a lot of work that has to happen. But I'm glad this chapter's done.
It wasn't easy. Twenty million was spent before Martha and I even got here, or appropriate, I should say, and. To spend even that ten million wasn't easy. And I'm glad that we were able to spread it out over the whole county, I'm glad that everybody in the county, every township had an opportunity. Uh, I think we picked great projects. I wish we could fund them all, and there's even more and more. Projects coming in now, people thinking now, oh, we should have done this, should have done that, it gives us goals to work for in the future with. County budget stuff, we're working together with those same communities to make it happen, but. It was a blessing, we got this money, kinda like oil and gas money was unexpected. We got it and we've spread it out best we can, and I think we're gonna see. Residuals on this for years and years to come, it's a nice little jumpstart to our county. With the new economy we're coming into, it's a perfect way to kinda kick off. Everyone got their main wish and what they wanted, and we really didn't have to say no to any township or any entity on their main wish. They were all, they all got to rub the genie's lamp and. Give their wish, some of them had to do three wishes, but they got one of them. Um. And it wasn't, it it wasn't easy, but I do wanna thank too. The one thing, this board of commissioners didn't go on pretty much anything, but when it came to our stuff. All three actually attended the meetings, all three actually agreed to. Thankfully, to spread the money around and wasn't much resistance as far as where it went. And that was a, that was a good thing for the people, for the citizens too, that. That when it came to. Getting money out of the community, we actually agreed on something, and that's kind of the one thing, so. This was a, this was good, I wish a thirty million more for next year, but fortunately, Rick. This is goose eggs.
Eddie, great.
We're down, we're down on the hard work, now we're all asleep, so. Yes.
Julie Green, I brought one more entity, was the African-American UCM, which I believe they're having a ribbon cutting today. At two P M, in Bray'sville, with the chamber, so I think they were one of the very first people that we know to. After Barry Brown, so that's a great project too. Okay, first we have to go and figure out how we're gonna get your info.
That's right. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else have anything for the good of Trump County? Drop it up, been fun, these workshops have been. Pretty awesome, and I think next year, we're gonna have active workshops with three participants at most every one of them. And I think we can really, really use them for what they're worth as being a workshop to get work done, so we come in on Wednesdays and it's nice, boring. Motion, second, move on, boom, 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 and I appreciate the first day that I got here. Uh, the participation we get in by department heads, you know, that you guys showing up. Had your input and we don't have to guess and wonder and makes so much easier when. Everyone's here to ask the questions while we're here, it may not seem like much, you know, and then, but it is. Necessary, it is necessary to be part of the communication, it's crucial, and we we have great communication with our department heads. We really don't have any oddballs or anyone that bucks the system, we had some that asked for more than others. But.
Just looking at you.
But that's great, that's great, Gary got fourteen and he must think he could have fifteen four. That's right, no, it's, I like when they fight for their departments, I love that, whether it's Stacy fighting for more money or you fighting for money. That's what you're supposed to be doing, it's fighting for the people, so. Um, that's been fun. Okay, anybody else? Any final thoughts, Mr. Shug? All right. And there's no, no need for a motion to adjourn, but the meeting, meeting's over.